Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Call to order at six thirty-two P M. Meeting is being recorded and broadcast. We'll jump down to review of the FY twenty-four Maple Ave Landfill Professional Engineering Services Proposal. Pete, you're here, come on up. So this is our annual post-closure environmental.
Services.
Every year.
Yeah, this one's a lot different, though. Financially.
Oh. I was gonna say.
The year of the proposal.
Yes.
Yes.
You beat me to it.
So what's been added is the all the PFOS testing, so that would probably attribute to some of that.
Did you compare? Do you have this versus last time?
I don't.
Do we have an approximate number of what it was in the past?
Um, top of my head, no.
I can probably find it real quick here. But the PFAS is new, which I don't know if they call out, they don't call out what portion that is, but it's significant, right?
Um, yes, because they want to do all the wells and then some of the houses there.
Yeah, so if while you're looking for that, I'm just, you know, because that'll give you a year over year and we can only see what the jump was.
Yep.
It was interesting to me that, you know, when I'm reading through the, um, the pipe is about eighty bucks. I jumped it up to three hundred and I was like a thousand dollars to put that in and they're gonna hand dig it. A three-foot or four-foot, you know, hole to put, just stick it in the ground. Like, that's a lot of money to dig a hole. And I'm just curious because they didn't, you know, in in task one, they they referenced a certain number of hours. If some of these could be broken down a little bit to say, how are you getting to these dollar amounts? Um, and I understand they put the rates, but how many of these people are there? You know, are you, are you putting the, um, a project compliance specialist? Are you putting a construction observer three, a construction observer two? Like, what rates are you charging us to get to these dollar amounts? I'm, I'm beyond the, you know, the time where I'll just look at this and be like, oh, the engineer said it's gonna cost us twenty-two thousand dollars. So it's gonna cost us twenty-two thousand dollars. Check, move on. Uh-uh. I wanna know how, like, you know, are we, are we putting two staff engineers at the site when they're doing that? Is that why we're being billed for a hundred and thirty-five for one, a hundred and twenty-five for the other? Could it be done with one? Like, there's no, I have nothing to ask. I have nothing to compare with or, or, you know, question. Because there's no information there other than these are the overall objectives that we want to complete. And here's what we're telling you it's gonna cost. And I want a little bit more info on that, but that's just my own preference. I, yeah.
I'm not about to disagree with you with the level of scrutiny that we are going to need to look at everything in the coming years.
Agreed.
We've gone through this before with, with, I don't know if it was with Tyon Bond or Weston, where we said, we need some more clarity. Break it down a little bit more. Explain to us how you're coming to these charges and what, what services are actually being performed by who? How did you get to these dollar amounts?
Okay.
And if they're justifiable, they're justifiable. And we look at it and said, oh, we're mandated to do this, this, and this. And we have to have these people on site and they're at these rates. And this is the estimated time that we're using and, you know, that's how we come to it. Thank you for the clarity, you know, that, that would make sense rather than, these are the tasks and we're telling you it's gonna be twenty-one thousand dollars to do it. Why? So things are expensive. I'd like to know what we're spending it on.
Yeah, year over year, it's about, well, it's thirteen thousand, task one, thirteen thousand, two hundred is now twenty-one four this year. Year over year and the changes in the task really are, I'm just looking at them side by side here. Is basically midway down that first paragraph where it says the mass D E P permit modification, March twenty-one, two thousand and twelve. Basically, the next sentence. And the second to last paragraph before the dollars are the differences in the narrative year over year. So basically that PFAS call out in the latter part of that mid-sentence, mid-paragraph sentence there. And then the sample collection with the environmental scientist and the, um, analysis by statewide lab and requiring a six-hour, having an L S P for six hours for the O C and PFAS in there. For the contingency plan, those are adds from year over year, at least in wording. And the contingency plan review wasn't a thing last year, that task, that part of task one. But yeah, basically, the engineering almost doubled from forty-seven hundred to seventy-nine and lab is eighty-five to twelve-three. I don't know if PFAS is almost a hundred percent increase in costs, you know what I mean? Like, I hear what you're saying. I know it's something material, but. Uh, and then task two is exactly the same and it went up a hundred and fifty dollars on the engineering portion. So it's twenty-four, five, fifty to twenty-six hundred this year. And then task three. We did not have a, this soil gas point task three last year.
And their memo says it was, it wasn't there, it was missing. That's why they want to replace it. This is the.
Right.
Physical replacement of that.
Right. So that thirteen hundred is a, hopefully a one-off, one-time.
Yeah, but that's what I was talking about is your, your pre-mark and install the soil. I mean, if you look at what a soil gas point S G three is, it's a meter that's four foot down, that's encased in a PVC tube. Concrete, so it doesn't move and it sits there so they have a point to meter the gases four foot into the ground. Even in their own specs, they're gonna hand, hand dig. And to hand dig and to pre-market and hand dig a four-foot hole. And you can bore that with a homeowner's drill with an auger on it in about fifteen minutes. That's a thousand dollars. That's, that got me thinking about, well, how are we deriving, you know, these numbers? How are we getting to these price points? And even if it's year over year, not much of an increase, was it too high last year and we just? Sure, and we let it go, signed up on it, services that we need, we do it every year and moved on. But I'd like to see a little more clarity. And I think we have the time to do it. I don't think this is, time-wise, it's not imperative, you know, over the next two weeks that it's approved tonight.
Right.
I don't believe so. Looks like we've submitted reports in June.
Yeah.
At times, so we've got time.
So just to be clear, I'd like them to give a little more breakdown about how they arrive at the twenty-one four. And is there, are there drivers based on estimated number of hours or estimated number of staff? You know, they broke it down to laboratory twelve-three, engineering seven-nine. I, just a little more breakdown on how they got to those two numbers.
Yep, I'll try to get hold of them tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. What do we have budgeted for this, by the way?
About eleven.
Hmm?
I'm pulling that up here right now.
I'm guessing it's under fifteen.
It's in the wastewater budget, right?
Landfills.
Oh, that's right.
You have sixteen thousand in the operating budget, because that's traditionally around where it's been. We have eleven thousand, two eighty-two in an existing special article that we can also draw from.
Which was for?
It used to be funded out of a special article rather than the operating budget. You all made that change several years ago. And so the balance in that special article has been.
But never completed it.
Correct.
Okay.
So you do have sufficient funding between the two line items, but we can get you that additional information from Tampon.
I think throughout the next, I don't know, four months, five months, probably would make sense as we have these, you know, they're not ad hoc, but these different discussions, because I'm thinking about that saying, okay, regardless of what we decide to spend, there really should be an overspend in the operating budget and we should close that special article out. Probably over, um, using it and then artificially decreasing the operating budget year over year. We won't see what the real cost is and it can skew. So one, the operating budget, just from the standpoint of, if we budget sixteen and theoretically the new number is twenty-five because of PFAS, we should see twenty-five because when going to budgeting, we want to know it's actually gonna be twenty-five in future years. Then there's the, how do we find the difference this year? And that's maybe an option. But if we find articles that are just kind of lingering, that have money in them, that we never closed out from projects that are complete or things that we moved into operating budget instead of capital, you know, instead of annual appropriation or, or capital. At least just keep a running list of those to revisit as we go through budgeting process and possibly close, possibly, you know, use up in a special for a purpose along the way, et cetera, et cetera, right? Because if we transferred that into the operating in a special rather than just paying it out of there, then the spend in the operating budget will reflect the actual costs, right? It will just have had an influx of revenue it didn't have, or, you know, cash it didn't have before in the budget.
Correct. No, I, I agree. I was gonna, you know, to me, it's the same, it's a different mechanism to the same end. You're gonna use both pots either way. Instead of just using it upfront and expending that and then lessening with the burden on the operating, over expend the operating, show that there's a structural deficit.
Right.
And for this year, we can offset that at a special by transferring that money later.
Right.
You know.
Or if the budget has the capacity and we don't, that's fine, but then.
Then we close it out, yeah.
But then let's close that out and not leave that there, right? It's kind of the, because there's so many ways we might handle it, it just, they get, they, I think they could easily get lost in the number of times we're gonna probably have this conversation.
Mm-hmm.
This year especially, so I don't know if there's a way we can keep a tally of them, just kind of out there earmarks of, like, this fund, we might use it for this or we need to close out.
Yeah.
Things like that. So anyway, I'll have an answer for it, just something to think about.
Yeah. So just to be clear, I'm not saying that I'm, you know, like, not in favor of going forward with the service and with Tyon Bond. But before I can, you know, weigh in on that, I'd like to see a little more breakdown of how they got to their numbers.
Sure.
Just so we can justify it and say, you know, thumbs up and move forward with it.
I'll call Jeff tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else for Pete?
No.
F, FYI, Monday we'll start the mowing out there. I have the machine delivered Monday.
Excellent.
So.
Thank you.
At landfill?
Yeah, we do it in November. It just took a while to get the machine, so that'll be done Monday. Monday and Tuesday, it's like a day and a half.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
On, on the stuff arriving, it looks like Thursday for the freight, probably tomorrow for some of the U P S, just FYI. Yeah, just so if you guys get a call or someone shows up, you'll know what it is. That's just why I would let you know. Thank you. Okay, back to, here we go. Look back up to the top, review proposed amendment for the traffic rules and rags, second read.
No changes, still just the, no parking on one side of Wheelock.
Correct.
I have no concerns.
I have no further recommendations.
Carrie for third read next meeting.
Okay.
Surplus equipment request, assessors filing cabinet, second read.
No concerns moving that forward. No concerns here.
Carrie for next meeting, third read. And we. Is that recommended to go to meeting bed? Is that what we're thinking there for the?
I don't know that it has that type of value. We could.
Yeah, it said auction, but I, I kind of had the same question, so I was kind of, we don't have an answer tonight, that's fine, but for next meeting, thinking about, what do we do with it?
Something that we expect the value to be less than a hundred dollars or something like that. We would just advertise it in the around town and see if residents have interest first. So we'd probably recommend that.
Okay.
And no other town offices jumped at it? No. In the last several years, instead of filing cabinets, we've been doing better about moving everything to cloud storage, so, yeah. We likely will have more, yeah. Seems to be a consistent theme in a lot of industries.
Exactly. Instead, they need these taller racks with H VAC and, you know, exactly.
Somebody in town wanted.
I would think, yeah. I mean, if that doesn't work, we can always talk to our neighbor towns. Not that they probably are any different, but just in case.
They're probably digitized everything, too.
At the end of the day, from there, it's metal, right?
Yep.
Right. Okay, review meeting minutes, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Now, what did I have on those? All right, I gotta get back to them. Do you want typos so we can amend it?
Sure.
So if we go down to the second paragraph after we, after, at seven twenty-three, I'm sorry. It's page three of nine.
Okay.
It's the paragraph with Selectman Ambassador Ash asked Mark, if you go down to where Selectman member explained that an approved proposition to an F override will permanently increase. And you keep reading, Mark acknowledged the permanent, not permian.
Thank you. Is the prop two and a half missing a space or have it in the run please section, actually, too?
Yeah, it might spatially.
Okay.
The sentence above.
Mm-hmm. Can I add on the, before you go further? Just semantics, but I would prefer if we put a zero in front of that twenty-two cents, a couple lines down, just for visual, zero point two-two. If you would, if we're gonna make a few small edits, may as well.
Oh, yeah. The only other one, it's not actually a typo, it's just a preference. If you're in the second to last paragraph that starts with Mark asked about budget and you go down to line four.
Okay.
The word gauge, G A G E, it's technically correct, but typically you use G A U G E.
Let's do that.
They're interchangeable. I know it's nitpicking.
We use the term at work all the time, so it just makes me chuckle because some industries like A, some have A U. We use A U a lot, but yeah, it's funny.
I think, I think of A when you're talking about, you know, like a.
Wire gauge or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. American wire gauge. That's what I think of it.
And I think for that set of minutes, that's all I had.
Okay. Didn't have anything, right?
I don't have any additional minutes.
Okay.
We're removing them individual?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead if you want to.
I was just gonna move that we approve the minutes of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Minutes of October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
I have nothing for that one. Anybody, anybody else?
Just a question. Did we, oh, never mind, that's, there wasn't any. I was noticing that we called out absences and sometimes we don't, but maybe that's just because there wasn't any when I was scrolling back because it didn't have full membership at the time.
Right.
I'm good. No, no comment, just no concerns.
Make a motion to approve minutes from Wednesday, October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of Wednesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Just one question on those. Page three, oh, five. Second paragraph under discussion regarding special town election warrant. The last sentence. Deborah expressed agreement and noted the only condition article, and I don't know. If condition was just.
Sorry, where was that?
Oh.
Um, okay.
It didn't read, it didn't read right to me. It could just be me not understanding what was written.
Okay, I think it meant to be conditional article. So the idea that the wastewater article at town meeting was approved. Conditioned upon.
Okay.
So there was a series of those that were all dependent on the election on Monday. The only one to be approved at town meeting was the wastewater article. They all failed because the election, uh, was voted down. So that was intending to read conditional article, but we can reword that so it's clear. Would it read better if it said the only article to be approved was for the wastewater enterprise fund conditional upon approval at election? Yeah, we can reword that.
Okay. Any other items on there?
No, that was it. That was it for me, anyway.
I'm good.
Motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as amended.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We trust that you amended the.
They will all be amended.
I did not have a chance to read June twelfth.
Yeah, we'll carry him on next meeting. They're just to us for, because we didn't have him on the agenda. Or we did, I'm sorry. I just skipped right over him, just like we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
Skipped right over it because, yeah, I didn't get a chance to start even read him, so we'll carry him for next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Started to, but I just couldn't get him done before we got here.
We'll have him on for next, next meeting.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's material, but we have, I mean, maybe. We review initiatives of the first water commitment for FY twenty-four.
Yeah.
But there are two and three in here, but we didn't call them out.
Correct. So we originally, when I put the agenda together, assumed that they would all be.
A single.
A single, working with Bets, it's clear if they are all listed separately, so.
Okay.
So our proposal is to vote the first, second, and third.
Any concerns with that?
None. Yeah, just a question on all of the, talking about the abatements.
Yeah, so a review initiatives of first is really gonna be first, second, and third.
June thirteenth.
I should read November.
That's what I figured, tonight.
That's November thirteenth, we will amend those.
Yeah. I'm looking at it going, I don't remember doing this, but didn't you?
No, it's a now thing.
You did not. That's supposed to read November.
Okay, that's what I figured.
So it'll be as amended.
As amended.
Yep. And it was a read error and a transfer error?
So on one of the accounts, we had, um, an issue this time reading, so they went in, looked at the historical usage at that property and did an estimation, which occasionally happens. That homeowner has a, had a significant change in their use of the home, so they called the staff in to come take a look at the meter. The meter went into troubleshoot while the reading didn't happen and while they were there, they took the. there, they took the actual. So one of them is a transition from an estimated to an actual.
Is that the significant one?
No.
Okay.
The significant one is related to, there was a meter that needed to be replaced, and we have a few condos in town, and apparently in the design of the condos, they put both meters next to each other in a basement compartment, and so the staff changed the meters as labeled in the basement. Turns out that the labeling that was in the basement was reversed. And so the meter that they changed actually was for the other unit, we need to correct that, so that.
Crossed all that up.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, they went with what.
So their end meter reading was for the wrong unit, and then the new meter started.
So the readings are correct, they're on the wrong accounts.
They're on the wrong count, so that delta's way.
So we've worked with the Water Collector's Office, their recommendation is to present you all with the abatements, get these three charges reversed, that takes care of one matter completely, the second matter will reverse the meters, get them on the right accounts, and present to you new, a new water commitment for those accounts.
So for those two, we're just reversing the billing, basically, and we're gonna start over with the correct data?
Correct.
So we'll see a water commitment.
At the next meeting.
Next meeting for.
Correct.
Two of those accounts again?
Okay.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns?
No, and you want these all individually, it's cleaner?
In further consideration, it would be cleaner if each account was voted on, so if you're okay with that.
Make a motion, we approve the first water abatement of FY24 of account 107, the amount of $145.02 as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the second water abatement of FY24 for account 147, and the amount of $134.47 as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And make a motion to approve the third water abatement of FY24 for account 148, and the amount of $2,141.79 as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get those corrected and ready for your signature.
Great. Discussion regarding the small bridge grant notification and allowable engineering services. I'm Mariah, come on up. Thank you for joining us tonight.
A few months ago, we submitted an application for the small bridge grant program through Mast Dot. Originally, we had intended to submit to the construction program without realizing that we weren't technically eligible for it yet, since we didn't have a design ready to go. And so when I submitted that, they kicked it back and said, actually, you know, you're eligible for the design one, do you want to apply for that instead? And I said, sure. Originally, we were going to hear back in September, we didn't get notified until last week, but we did receive it. And in transitioning from construction to design, I also did not realize that rather than a lump sum of money to pay for a designer, they are offering designers. So it's technical assistance, they would, they have a group of, I think, 16 designers that are gonna be working with all the awardees across the state. And they do note in the award letter that if you already have a designer, they can try to work with us to maintain that. I don't know exactly what that means. Currently, we are under contract with Weston and Sampson to do the feasibility study, which includes all the way up to bid docs, I think. So we need to figure out how to move forward with that.
And this doesn't have a dollar amount, I assume, because they're gonna, they were, at least by design, they're gonna fund engineering firms directly that they've selected?
Right, and I think they have applicants who are all different stages, some who haven't started at all, and people like us who are partway through.
Got it. At this point, we don't know who those firms are, and they say they're onboarding a few more, so we don't know if Weston's on the list, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so I think, I wanted, I bring it forth, this is great, we got more grant money to, you know, work on these, especially right now, and this bridge, you know, it's gonna be challenging funding wise, so every bit helps, and maybe we get construction funding, anyway. Hopefully, getting ahead of myself, but also to, you know, understand it's a little bit different than some of the other grants for engineering and things like that. It's more like the technical services, where we've had like a shared cost and things like that.
Yeah.
And we have Weston and Sampson working on Church Street, which we know has been a difficult project to get, you know, through the stages, and we're trying to really get that moving forward, which has put this on the back burner. I mean, we had that conversation with Weston and Sampson, and, you know, said the priority is moving Church Street through, so we ensure we get that funding that is there to pay for that one. So intentionally kind of put this on the back burner right now, a month or two ago, when we had a conversation with them. So I don't know what that looks like if we wanted to go a different path, just so that, if we're trying to do two bridge projects at the same time, do we want to not have them doing both, just from a focus on a priority standpoint? Can we, are they even one of the ones on the list, what, you know, what, what does the contract allow, and or, you know, where are they at in terms of body of work and things like that within their scope, right?
So my first thought is, given the difficulties we've had already, trying to get Church to move along, adding another bridge, even if they were to be put on the list, and Mast Dot said, we'll, we'll work with them, I'm not sure we'll get the result that we want in a timely manner, I don't know if they have the capacity with their bridge team to take on both, both jobs simultaneously and give us the product that we want. Is there a way to work, how much work have they done so far? Do you know?
Yeah, so they've done the surveying work, and they, my understanding is that they have concepts, but they haven't put together a report yet. And so we actually have a check-in about the Church Street Bridge tomorrow, and so I was, even though we did ask them to kind of just focus on Church Street Bridge, get that through to where it needs to go, I did want to ask them, like, is all that they have to do, put these concepts into a report, or is there more engineering work that needs to be done, and kind of just get a better feel for where they're at right now?
I'm leaning towards saying if, if they're willing to, if they haven't put a lot of effort into it at this point, I mean, obviously, if they're, if they turn around tomorrow and say, we're 90% done, and we literally just have to type it up and send it over to you, that's one thing, and I don't know what we do at that point.
I think that is where they're at.
And I don't, you know, so I was just gonna say, if they're not that far along, is there a way that we can sever from them, have them continue to focus on Church, and utilize Mast Dot to backfill the engineering services, to finish up whatever's needed on that, and take that through bidding docs?
Yeah, just to be clear, so the concepts would just be, I think, a few concepts about where the bridge could be located, and like a conceptual design, so that's like, you have the beginning of the feasibility study, there's a significant amount of work that goes into the design, chapter 85 review with Mast Dot, you know.
Right, so I guess that's where I was talking about, so when we're talking conceptual, that's one piece, but then there's.
There's all this other stuff.
A whole.
And the contract is for all of that.
Okay.
So, but we haven't, but I think to your point, and in general, in terms of work executed, surveying, preliminary design, soil borings, I believe, but we have public engagement, iterations, I mean, there's, I want to say with Church, it was a couple of years of work in between, like this and that, final design selection, and there was other reasons too, but it's a, it's a lot of work. So I mean, it sounds like you at least are in favor of having a conversation with them about where are they at, what does it look like, to try to keep them focused on Church and, you know, be compensated for the work they did, turn over that potentially to be used, and continue on from there, or.
And not for nothing, financially, we, if, you know, we've used them quite a bit, and we'll continue to use them for future road and other, you know, studies that we need and engineering we need, but if timing had happened just a few months differently, we would have gotten the grant, we would have never had to engage them, it would be nice to be able to utilize those services through Mast Dot, through the grant, and save ourselves, given our current, you know, status of looking for funding, if we can take advantage of the grant that we got, and they would be amenable to saying, that's fine, just, you know, maybe there's a small fee for the work they've already done, we're not trying to say you get nothing, but, you know, compensate them for the work they've done, and see if we can just have them focus on Church and continue that, and there'll be others, I'm sure.
Other roads, bridges, culverts.
Yeah, there's other roads, bridges, culverts, that there's always gonna be designs for, and specs on. That's, that's my initial thought, and I don't know if that's just a direction of asking Mariah to engage in that conversation tomorrow, to see, you know, where they're at and what their willingness is, and I don't know, how you, what sort of feedback do you need from us, do you need a formal ask?
I mean, breaking a contract is a vote.
Yeah, but see, we're not. We're not there, we're not there.
We're not there, and that's why, you know.
You know, if, if, if the board's guidance is that, you know, that's the direction we want to look at, but then, you know, separating two projects, separating who's doing them, sheerly in, I mean, if timing becomes an issue, for me, and just to add commentary, I guess, if timing becomes an issue between, like, we're on a really hard timeline path with Church right now, and we can't, we need to gain days, not lose days, and then there was some timelines implemented during the grant by Mast Dot, and we had to compete, that's not where we can be, right? So that even just sheerly for that reason, I feel like separating them would be good, into two different firms doing, which potentially somewhat simultaneous or staggered work, you know, because of, because of the nature of the projects and the need of the funds. If the board is leaning in that direction, that's the direction we want to go, then I can work with Mariah and Brian on approaching Weston and Sampson, and figure out where we have the conversation, how we have the conversation, and then, you know, bring that feedback back, once we've had that with them about, you know, how do we work together to get to mutually, you know, satisfying directions on these projects?
Yeah. And that, that's where I'm at, not to just regurgitate everything Scott said, but it's worth the conversation and seeing how flexible, I know we're engaged with them, I know all of that, but given the current state, how amenable are they and willing to?
Work with us on this one?
Work with us, yeah, provide some relief from the current commitments of that contract.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think we can bring that back to have a discussion about what does that look like, you know, if they're hopefully, you know, wanted to work with us on it, and I think, you know, historically, they have been really good about working with us, so I don't, I don't presume that to be an issue, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some peace to it, and we'll sort out the details, and we can bring that back and say, here's what that looks like, and discuss through what it does or doesn't look like, and what that means our decision is, right? Our decision point is to make. And then if there's formal contract, you know, adjustments or closures that we need to do, we can go through the formalities at that point.
Yeah, I'd like the formalities to be more of a mutual agreement, and not a, you know, a battle of wills of, you know, who's gonna fulfill the contract and who's not.
Right.
We've got a longstanding relationship with this firm, I'd like to keep that in good standing, keep them moving forward.
Put it out there, we're not looking at this as, we want to find a way to breach it, we want to mutually dissolve it.
Correct, that's, that's where I'm.
That's not where we are, we're not, we're not in that.
Correct.
This is a friendly, how do we work together?
My ask was a conversation about how can we mutually come to an agreement to move, to sever these, continue to have a working relationship with them now on Church and in the future for other projects that we're gonna, we know we'll have down there.
And Maple, and Bridge, and we have others.
We have others.
Already in progress.
We will have lots more in the future that we don't even know about yet.
So we're looking for a way to build a bridge about the bridge.
Yes, exactly.
In terms of the grant, should I just hold off on communication with them about that? They're not asking or pressuring me to like respond right away, I think usually they assume when they're awarding money that you're probably gonna take it, but it sounds like maybe I should just wait until we have this conversation with Weston and Sampson, and you're all able to come back and discuss it at your next meeting.
Yeah, and you're meeting with them tomorrow, you said?
Yeah.
Weston and Sampson, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And you think you'll have, you said you wanted to check in with them, you all have time to check in with them before their meeting?
Them?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I think so. What time's the meeting, one?
I think so.
Two?
One or 1:30?
Before, it's after lunch, not before.
Yeah.
I think we'll have a chance to quickly huddle up and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Maybe I'll give Scott a quick call if I need to, or someone on the team and have a conversation, whatever that looks like, we'll sort it out. Thank you. I would say, I mean, if they're, if they're not looking for response, then that's fine, but if it's commonplace for us to respond and say, thanks, great, we're excited, then I don't think there's any reason not to, because regardless of whether we change firms or not, I think we still want to try to figure out how to continue on with this funding to help.
Correct.
So that's a separate internal issue, I think. If they are potentially willing to work with who you have already, which you said in the opening there, they, they would try to, if you already have someone, you've already started, then regardless, we want, we would, we want the money.
All right.
Blunt about it, right?
And then just, you know, the acknowledgement that we have some internal workings with our current engineering firm that we would like to sort out before we.
Right.
Actively engage in your technical support.
And that was in our application, so presumably they understand that there's going to be a conversation that has to be had, so, all right, I'll just say thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just tell them, thank you, we're excited.
We can't, we can't wait to get it, and we'll let you know when.
Yeah.
And it sounds like generally they're, they're gonna reach out and tell us who they've selected for us to use for a firm.
Yeah, I think they have more work on their end too, so I imagine that they're not like, ready to go immediately.
And if that outreach says, you know, you're already working with somebody, how does that look, we can have that conversation, if we're not ready, we can tell them we need a little more time and.
Sounds good.
All right.
Cool, thank you. Is that, anything else on that one?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to stay up here for?
You can.
Okay.
No reason not to, if you'd like to. It's probably not gonna get too deep, because of further discussions depending on decisions tonight. Discussion regarding IP mill property insurance concerns. So you guys have the memo, we received mandatory notice of things that had to be done within 30 days at the IP mill after the inspection, which was property visits once a week, ensuring no unauthorized individuals are entering, which, I mean, they're doing regular checks, so that's, that's a non-issue, we've already communicated that, right?
Correct.
Board up all broken windows to prevent entry, we've done this more than once, and I think the ones they're talking about now are.
Upper stories.
Multiple floors above ground, so.
Right.
I think pigeons might be getting in, but not necessarily people from those access points.
Right.
And then stabilized a portion of the roof decking that's collapsing on the upper floor, and I don't know if this is like building five whatever on the side, or if this is a different spot, but regardless, is it, is it the one on?
It's part of building.
Kind of right, if you're facing it on the side?
Where it came in?
It's on the left side, no.
It's a different spot.
It is a different spot than the one that's, that's, that's.
There's a, you're thinking of the wall that started.
Yeah, and it's starting to, yeah.
This is a different part where the roof collapsed.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because that's probably going to be a roof collapse too at some point, sooner than later, this winter.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so I've already communicated back to the insurance company that their timeline is completely unrealistic.
Yeah, it's just impossible to meet.
So we cannot, I told them that I bring this to your attention, and that our expectation is that we're seeking demolition funding at the minimum, and that we would need 60 and 90 days at the shortest period to do something, and the idea of asking you or the voters to reinforce and reconstruct structurally a roof that you intend to tear down does not sound viable, that does not sound like it's something that would be approved. So they were gonna communicate back to the carrier, the circumstances, and the fact that we are doing regular checks on the, on the property to secure it, so I don't know what the response is. The response could be that they will give us 60 and 90 days to figure out our next steps, it could be no action and a notice of nonrenewal at the end of the, the insurance period, or they may be fine with that response, I don't know.
So one, I wanted to bring it, so you're both aware, obviously, and we know we can't take action quick enough, so we need to hear this response, but also to, it may have been mentioned, I know over years of talking about this, it's a path, we know the RFP was unsuccessful again. again. We know to climate for a prop override for the tax, for taxes in general, it doesn't, I think, give, I believe any of us the confidence that they're going to want to spend three point eight million to demo something on a debt exclusion either. So, I don't think we should put money into the site. And another option is to just auction it. At the end of the day, I know we didn't like the idea of it. And I'm not saying we'll make a decision tonight. I think we should bring finance and capital and have this conversation if that's, if we have to take action based on the response. But potentially, I mean, it's back on the tax rolls, whether they pay or not, it's not generating tax revenue today. It's not our liability. If the roof issue, anything else, we're not insuring it anymore, we're not bearing that cost. And if now they want repairs to maintain that insurance level, doesn't, well, we can't control what happens with it like we wanted to. I don't know at this point if that's viable for three point eight million dollars anymore to, to kind of be in control of that site's destiny. Nor does it make necessarily sense to keep that liability on us anymore, and the insurance, and the cost, right? So, I just wanted to float that as a possibility. Obviously, we'd need to engage the treasurer, who has the authority to auction the property.
Yep.
And that's something that, I think I just asked you, high level, was it, it's a few month process?
If, yes. Thirty days would be cutting it way too short, so a minimum a month, if not more. And I would say that's for a experienced team in the treasurer's office, having done this before, and we do not do this as a normal course of business. And this is also a specialty property. This is not the same as auctioning vacant land or auctioning a home.
A residence, yeah.
This is a very niche property, and my understanding is back probably before the town took ownership, the previous holding company tried to auction it, it was unsuccessful. And my belief is, when the town first took it, there was conversation about considering to auction it, and for some reason that did not happen, whether they tried and it was unsuccessful, or, or it just wasn't the right market conditions. So I don't think we can also assume that it's going to maybe be successful the first time. It doesn't hurt to try if that's the direction you all want to go.
Did we take this twice or only once?
Take the property?
Mm-hmm.
You took it once. You took it in
I feel like I remember conversations about it being auctioned and then the building stripped and then taken again, but maybe it was just taken and the auction wasn't a town.
It was sold to a company, or auctioned off to a company.
Yeah, it was a private auction transaction, not a, not the town's, yeah, I'm just mixing the two, but yeah, that's, that's what happened with the results of their auction.
Correct.
Before it was, yeah.
You ended up with it.
Got it. And, I mean, fast forward, at the end of the day, we happened to decide to do that and they don't pay taxes, we don't have to close on it. We don't have to take it back right away. We don't traditionally execute a tax title case to take property quickly.
No.
So, it's not like we would take that liability back on in a year if there were tax issues.
No. You will just potentially inherit it back in a different reality, so. Today is not great, just if it further deteriorated and you received it back years from now, it could be a different situation.
I don't see the posture of the town changing anytime soon, and on the cost of demo renewal.
To, just be fair, Brian and I had this conversation the other day. We haven't brought this to voters yet, demolition.
Correct.
You know, we've had info sessions, we just watched what happened with the override vote, but I think that this is slightly different than the override vote and that it's a one-time cost for demolition. And so, you know, I encourage, obviously, you all to do what you feel is right, but I just want to be careful that we're not assuming what people will vote based off of different circumstances.
It's a fair assessment. It's also twice that cost. And I think the general preference was to spread it out over five years.
Three or five, I can't remember.
Yeah, so it was a, it's one time, but it's more, it's over a period, so I think that'll be challenging.
It's not a forever change.
Correct, correct, yep. And it doesn't mean we can't bring it. If, if it's voted down, then take this other path, but also explore them both at the same time.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to sort of grapple with, is how do we do both simultaneously? Satisfy the sum of the, not all, some, some of the requirements from the insurance company, and also balance that with potentially an auction, and balance that with if the voters still want to do an override, to demolish it and repurpose the land, we have all three options. And, and I think you're right to say that, you know, because I know we talked about it last week or a week before, and I said the same thing, and had that, you know, that guttural reaction like, well, if that, if the other one failed, this one probably won't. But the idea that they are different. One is raising a levy limit forever, and you'll, you'll pay that additional funds now until you no longer are resident in town. And the other one is, I'm going to pay for a finite one, two, three, five years, and then it's over, and it reverts back. So there, different mindset on that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just wondering about timeline. Do we have the ability or capacity to sort of move forward with the process of what that one article override would be for the demolition, while we entertain the, the idea of just a straight-up auction, simultaneously looking at what's that process look like, and mitigate two of the three? Stabilizing a structural portion of the roof decking is not anything.
I don't know that we want to bear the cost of boarding up third, fourth story windows with the lift equipment and everything.
First floor, I was thinking, that's fine.
They're talking about high, high entry, not low.
We have a little money left in, but insecure.
I know we do, but I, I'm not inclined to want to spend it on this.
I hear you.
So, if it's only pigeons entering the third floor, we are then blocking them from exiting.
That's
Sounds inhumane.
Oh, I don't
It's early for that. Anyway, you know, entry or not, I'm sure there's issues with it, and we're never going to prevent it all, and the upper floors aren't, aren't necessarily the primary cost or issue. So, I think to your, you, but you asked a question, capacity. If we get sixty to ninety days, one hundred and twenty, sure. I think a spring special's not unlikely at this point.
Okay.
With some other things that didn't happen or need to happen, right?
Right.
So, potentially, I think it's really going to hinge on that. If they say it's thirty days, well, then we've got a different decision. We're not going to do anything in thirty, right? So it's a decision on what is the answer, not
Correct.
What is getting done in thirty.
If they're unwilling to waiver on any of these, then I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure, but I would assume that their recourse would be non-renewal, either, if, you know, so you have until the end of the
Can they cancel? They might have a clause that allows them to.
Probably.
But, it's a little ways down the road, probably.
So you're going to reach out to them and
I was thinking, it turns down to non-renewal, is that by fiscal year?
Our insurance year goes through August. This policy goes through August, so.
So ish, yeah.
Yeah, ish.
Ish. Well, I was just wondering if we showed a little good faith to say by renewal.
We did that last year.
And we're, and we're still working on it. And just to go back a little bit, I'm not saying doom and gloom, and I understand these are two different issues. I'm just in my head thinking of what some of the more outspoken sentiment from the constituency regarding this has been.
For context, we often refer to the insurance company or Maya in a very general way. They are the, the entity that brokers all of this for us. They are not the insurers. And so they are going out to the market and they're finding policies. They usually are underwritten by loads of London to, to support this property. And so, they really had to work hard this year to find a insurer that we have never worked with before to cover this property, because those who have covered us in the past with no claim history, we have not made any claims on any of our policies, have refused to renew our policies just because of how long this property has sat. So we, the pool has become very shallow for us. And we were very fortunate to get this policy, even though it does not, it's, it's bare bones coverage to begin with.
Yeah, if, if you
And Mast Development did reach out to me again today to check on the status of the conversation about demolition and our six hundred thousand dollar grant. So, they've been very patient, but we've held on to this money for, I think, close to two years now.
And it was in the back of my mind too, that they needed an answer.
And we may just, and not that, again, you're not making decisions tonight, but with that knowledge, you all may want to consider just starting some demolition, six hundred thousand dollars worth, or whatever we need to, to get the worst of the status.
So here's where my question, my mind was going, is, you said it was part of five that the roof is caving in?
Mm-hmm.
How far would six hundred thousand get us through building five?
So unfortunately, the two parts of, the roof collapses kind of in the middle of, you can't really, and there's, we don't know if there's asbestos in the roofing material, so you're also paying for abatement if you're removing things. And then you have to secure, you're not going to be able to, six hundred thousand dollars is not going to get you to where it is.
Yeah, I wasn't sure the location, if it was like five A, if it was on the
It's not easily accessible. Of course, it's not easily accessible.
Tear it off and board it up.
You could probably, if you were going to do just a portion, get the part that Jake was talking about earlier, where the, the wall is collapsing in, that's on the side of the river. You know, I don't know how much that would cost. We, I think we had some, I could probably kind of figure it out, but
Some partial.
But again, we still don't know if, if any of the roofing has asbestos. And even if you started on that end and worked your way in, you, you're not going to address the roof that's starting to collapse.
Okay.
No, you, I mean, I think you'd go in and you have to cut it out, and then we've got a lease secure
Yeah.
And structurally and, you know, safety wise, the remaining
And I imagine, once you start chasing things back, you're not going to find anything to secure it too.
Building's probably stronger than we think.
Yeah.
In some areas.
Yeah, I just don't know how far, you know, every time you do a house project and you're like, this will be fine, and then you start opening things up, and it's never fine.
Yeah, we don't want to start digging deep, that could get ugly fast. But, I mean, it's not, it's not wrong, and I was going to say, you know, we should, my proposal would be, we get the answer, if that's in time for next meeting, we'll have it be a joint, we'll have the other groups with us, we'll talk through what that response is, what does that allow us to do, what paths do we want to explore. I think giving treasurer time to get all the details on what we'd have to do to do that while we're considering working on an STM potentially and putting that out. I mean, they can happen, I would expect concurrently. And then we stagger the actions if that's appropriate. But a third one is also, I know there were some limitations, but not necessarily a ton on that money, so what can we do, what can't we do, and what would that get us, is another path, right?
Our original proposal for that was selective demolition.
Right.
And I did already submit my capital request for this for next year, and so I have, you know, on my tables and everything with that. So, my plan was to start talking about that with capital on the fourteenth when they meet. But if you're going to have a joint at your next meeting and you'd prefer that I kind of present the current information on that at that meeting, I'm happy to do that as well.
I think we'll see timing on the answer. We won't, this will be like the derating of Church Street. We're not going to go aggressively asking for answers. We've told them what we can do, and asked for some response until we hear it. I think it's unpossible.
Yeah.
When we hear it, we'll, I'll work with you and Brian on scheduling and getting it back to the right groups.
Right.
Based on whoever that is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Yeah. One of many fun topics to come this year. Next meeting is Monday, the twenty-seventh. Right now, it's at six thirty. We have a couple, at least a couple things. We have CDVG hearing or presentation.
I'm going to reach out to them, see if we can make that work.
Current firm, that'll work, and if not, we'll move it to the eleventh.
Yep.
Tax rate.
It's looking like the eleventh.
Yep, so they want to come do that.
The planning board's hoping to meet with you on the twenty-seventh to appoint a member.
To appoint, yeah, they have an interested party, right? Yeah, so there's a few, and then there's just, oh, we might have documents for Maple Bridge.
They're looking for December eleventh.
For the eleventh?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, the notice of intent and the environmental permitting's done, so they're ready to finalize bid documents, put them in front of you with the hope to conduct the procurement in January.
And then the senior housing proposal? The senior housing committee's reviewed?
Senior housing committee began their review last week. They're meeting again on Monday to review again, and they're preparing a recommendation for the three of you.
Which could come in one of the next couple meetings as well?
Correct.
And IP Mill will probably be in one of the next couple meetings, and that's
This is why today was a nice, short meeting.
Yeah, I know, that's what I said, don't get used to it.
Snacks and sleeping bags for the month of December.
Got it. And I feel like I need to revisit what we talked with in the joint meeting and last meeting, because there were some topics that we didn't set a joint date, but there was a lot of things that were maybe ancillary or in addition to budget calendar that we need to fit in as we go here, so. Oh, the library closed out, so I had to work with you on what we want to go through with the library trustees on the building project and budget and stuff. Get that scope together, get it over to them, and then we can schedule a joint to talk through that with them, look at the funding, the payback, where we are at, all of that, and where the project's at, because we hopefully are very close to finally closing it fully.
That's correct.
And I know we probably need to just true up everything and make sure we're on the same page.
Yes.
Yep, I can do that, okay. Anything you guys have? Just a preview of things to come. Okay. With that, I move to go into an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do, ask me wastewater and water unit. And immediately following, move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do, any PBA local one-twenty-one police unit, we will not return to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Brian, what do you call the roll?
Selectman Lloyd?
Aye.
Selectman Bastarash?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.